I was under the impression it was on.
And not until you took the vote.
Okay, so now it is on.
It is on now.
Great, thank you very much. That brings us to approval of the minutes of June 10, 2021, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Also move.
Thank you Rebecca. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you Kelly. Are there any corrections of the minutes of June 10? Alright, and any objections to approving these minutes? Any abstentions? Alright, minutes approved, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 19, 2021, special meeting? Thank you Edith, do I have a second? Thank you Catherine. Any corrections? Any objections to approving this motion? Any abstentions? Alright, motion passes, thanks very much. Next we have recognition of our new certified staff and I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Great, thank you. So please this evening, we have several new staff members here in the audience with us this evening. I've had a chance to meet each of them multiple times now. I've even been in some of their classrooms already. We're really excited by the candidates that we had apply for our positions this year and even more excited by the candidates who accepted our offers and now have become teachers in Mansfield. Our new teachers go through a pretty rigorous process of selection. It's a process that generally involves staff from the schools, so we really are looking to hire people that we believe fit our beliefs and will engage in practices that are important to Mansfield and perhaps most importantly also work well collaboratively with others in their schools, which is why we involve other staff members on the hiring committees. So at this time, I'm going to invite the principals to introduce the staff members who are here this evening and I will let you know that, I'm not quite sure how Candace is doing this, but there's an open house going on at MMS right now and there are a couple of new staff members that are at that open house. So Candace, if you don't mind coming up and introducing your staff. I'm sorry, but because we're live streamed, you have to be on a mic. You have to be on a mic to speak, right? And they too, correct?
If they speak, yes.
Okay. So, good evening. We're pleased to share that we were fortunate to hire four new staff members to our middle school this year. Two are here tonight and two are actually at open house. I'd first like to invite up Ally Thody. Allison Thody is not new to us this year, although she's new to you. Last year she was a one-year long-term substitute in 7th grade. We had a resignation at the end of the year and we were so delighted to be able to have her join us as 7th grade literature and language arts teacher. So Allison, if you'll come up for a moment.
Hello everyone. I'm Allison Thody. It's nice to meet all of you. Just a little bit of background about me. So I did receive my bachelor's from Central Connecticut State University. That's where I received my BA in English Literature and deepened my passion, much so. So I decided to go for my masters in the science of secondary education with a specialization in language arts for grades 7 through 12. That was at the University of Bridgeport. Since then I did, I have done two other long-term substitute stints and obviously those, the permanent teachers did return from their leaves. And then I was fortunate enough to start at Mansfield Middle School. So I was a one-year last year, as Candace mentioned. And again, I was fortunate enough to sort of fall into place in that position and I could not be happier and I'm so happy to be here today. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Our next hire this year, Maggie Coefragesco is out on maternity leave and so we welcome Alexi Bois. She is joining Ally Thody in 7th grade in language arts and literature and since her hire has jumped right in.
Hi, so my name is Alexi Bois, as was introduced. This is my first year teaching. Very excited to begin my career at Mansfield. So, some background about me. I did my bachelor's in English at Eastern Connecticut State University and I continued there for my masters in science in secondary education with specialization in English. And, yeah, I'm really excited to get started.
Well, we're very excited to have you here. Best of luck.
So we also had two other, I'll say fairly significant hires this summer. We learned at the end of last year that Lisa Korovo, our band director, was retiring. And we went out for a search this summer and it is just, that process has just reaffirmed for me that people want to work in Mansfield. We had a very robust group of candidates that applied and we were deeply pleased to be able to hire Rebecca Harding. Rebecca joins us as a new band director with a experience of many years at a middle school in Rocky Hill, 17 years. Has familiarity with middle school band as well as building a band program from the very beginning of beginning instrumental. She brings to us experiences, she's a graduate of Syracuse University and additionally has her sixth year from Wesleyan University. And she too jumped right in, ordered PPE, figured out how she's going to transfer, transition the stage into a band ensemble and is already meeting with families. So she's not here tonight because she wanted to make sure that she was able to speak with families of her beginning band students in 5th grade, but we're delighted to have her. We also welcome a new library media center specialist, another big hire for our building. We conducted that search this summer. We were very fortunate to be able to hire Stacy Ristau. She comes to us with experience, six years of teaching experience at Putnam Middle School and an additional three years of library media centers experience there. She's very passionate about the work she's done in library and media center there and is really looking forward to joining our school this coming Monday. She was a late hire at the end of the summer, so she actually will join us this coming Monday. But it's already been hard at work. She's, she too is at our open house this evening. She was at our open house last evening and has already been coming in after her commitment to her present district to just get the lay of the land and understand all things library media center at MMS. So we're really pleased to have her with us as well. Thank you. And I see Peter Dart in the audience. He has a new staff member to introduce.
Good evening everybody, great to see you. I'm very honored and proud to introduce two teachers that are joining Goodwin. But before I do that, I wanted to share, the three elementary principals shared a lot of the task of hiring, that we were very mindful that we were not only hiring for Goodwin, Vinton, Southeast, but we were hiring for elementary schools. And so it was an honor to work with my colleagues and share those best practices to find the best candidates. So it's with pride that I introduce Dr. Laurel Brandon. Dr. Laurel Brandon comes to us as our STEM enrichment teacher. She has a great background. She's already digging in and coordinating across the district, thinking about opportunities to lift up the new building project in terms of the net zero part and how that will connect to STEM and enrichment and is really digging into working with our students. She of course was familiar with the district that she helped us last year through the remote learning team. So with honor, Dr. Laurel Brandon.
Thank you very much. Now I was promised there'd be no speeches, so I'll make this very short. So like the others, I'm very excited to be working here in Mansfield and at Goodwin. I'm really excited about the different components of this role that I have, working on environmental science with every student in the school and working with the teachers to do enrichment activities and help to support them with science in their classrooms. In terms of my background, I got my bachelor's degree in Arizona, at Arizona State University in education and also in German. And I then came to UConn through their three summers program and later came here for the PhD program. So I have both a masters and a PhD in educational psychology with an emphasis in giftedness, creativity and talent development. So I'm very much looking forward to supporting the talents and interests of all the students at Goodwin and maybe into the future.
Great.
Thank you. So our second hire at Goodwin was for our pre-K position. Heather Lasky was our pre-K teacher. She wanted to step up into kindergarten where we were expanding back to two sections. So it was exciting to see a staff member grow and take an opportunity, but it provided us with an opportunity to look for candidates in the pre-K field. We were very fortunate to find Christina Stepulavich, who is a, was a teacher in New London in the pre-K program. She also worked in Killenly. She rose from a para to a certified position and came with a lot of great practices specifically with special education and equity. We were very impressed with how she thought about data, students and thought about that equity through line through her work. Christina did her undergraduate work through a couple of different universities and is taking on her masters program as she balances life-work balance. You know, so she is home right now with a young one, but she already has started to engage her kids, her families. She had 100% of her kids and families show up before we started school just to do a meet and greet and tour the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike Seal.
Good evening, it's great to see people in person. Nice to see, I hope your year is off to a great start like ours at Vinton. And we, it's my pleasure to introduce Hannah Falk. So we added a kindergarten teacher this year. And we had a long list of really great candidates as usual. Like Candace said, a lot of people want to work in Mansfield, it's really a gift. So Hannah is from New Providence, New Jersey. She completed her master of arts in curriculum and instruction and bachelor of science degrees at UConn and is kind of coming home, right? She is looking forward to working back in Mansfield next to her alma mater. And she has been a kindergarten, first grade and third grade teacher in other districts. And when you read her resume, she's got really rich experiences in a number of districts with responsive classroom and reading workshop and really strong social-emotional learning, so really a good match for Mansfield teachers. So, this is Hannah.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm Hannah Falk. I'm going into my sixth year of teaching. Originally, I'm from New Jersey. So I spent the beginning part of my career, the first five years of my career, teaching home in New Jersey. So I'm really excited that Mansfield so far feels like home, especially because, you know, my loved ones are back in New Jersey. But I truly believe that the collaboration here, the support that I've received in only the first six days of school, I think it is, has been astronomical. I find myself wanting to grow and better my practices and I can tell from the administration that that is the goal, to grow the teachers and I think I found, I think I've found home. I think I've found a good place. Furthermore, I've kind of bumped around from different grade levels, starting off in kindergarten, moving to 3rd grade, then switching to 1st. And I, I think my heart is in kindergarten, so it's really great to be back with the primary age and use some of the background that I have, starting off in Mansfield here. So thank you so much for having me and I really truly think, because I've been in so many different districts, that the fact that you welcome your new teachers here and you invite them to speak is, is very remarkable. So the warmth that you're showing me is really great. So thank you for that.
Well, welcome, welcome.
My first.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
My first.
First I would like to say sorry, we put you on the spot folks. We normally would have refreshments and take a recess and mingle and introduce ourselves, but for obvious reasons, we can't do that. But we very much appreciate you coming here and we wish you the best. And, welcome, thank you very much.
I have one more hire, Pauline Hayes.
Oh yes.
Was a remote teacher last year and she has become the reading interventionist at Vinton. She's taught for 30 years. She's taught 4th, 5th, 1st in kindergarten, K to 8, summer schools. Her passion is science and reading. And I can tell you, she's hit the ground running. We have organized reading groups and really, she has been assessing all of our new kids and digging in with, in professional learning with Kay Jacob and is already an important member of our group. So welcome Pauline, she couldn't make it tonight, but glad to have her.
Thank you very much, Mike. Well, once again, welcome and these meetings are terribly exciting. You're more than welcome to stay, but we certainly understand if you would like to leave now. Thank you so much. So that brings us to our first hearing for visitors. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Seeing none. Jill, communications?
Thank you Kathy. Thank you Kathy. We received a thank you card from Mansfield Human Services for a donation that I will pass along, as well as a thank you card from Celeste Griffin for her retirement gift. And we had one additional letter of resignation that came in, that we will share.
The letter came in earlier, it just was not in the packet.
Oh yes, thank you.
It was inadvertently left out of your packet. So should we have a copy for you to add to your packet?
Is that on the consent agenda? Is it included?
It is.
Okay, thank you, great. Thank you very much Jill.
You're welcome.
If you could pass those around, that would be awesome.
Sure.
Are there any additions to our present agenda? I don't believe we have any committee reports. That brings us to information, presentations and actions. And I'd like to introduce Scott Pelman, our owners representative from Colliers International, to go over the new school completion timeline. Hi Scott. Thanks for joining us.
Oh sure, good evening everyone, happy to be here again. Excuse me. Scott Pelman from Colliers Project Leaders.
We have some water over there.
Yeah, I may, I may need that.
We're making you nervous, huh?
Nope. Testing one, two, there we go. Okay, the voice is back. Hopefully it stays with me. I don't know Jill, if you were going to bring up some of the diagrams.
I sure will.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So I'm, yeah, I'm here to report on the progress of the school project, specifically focusing on the completion dates and what's going to happen in transpire before that time. But I am happy to say that right now the project is on schedule. I think, you know, a lot of you, if you've been by the school, I'm sure all of you have. It's been very exciting with the tree clearing. We had a phenomenal groundbreaking and opening ceremony. The portable classrooms around the east side of the existing building have been removed and the whole building and grounds have been prepared for school opening, which, which I understand went very smoothly. So we're already on good firm standing. The schedule you see before you is very high level. The red bar just kind of indicates where we are right now within our construction process. A lot of the foundations have been going in, things have been going very well, very smoothly. One of the first things that we'll start to coordinate going into preparing for the fall opening will be packing up with all the teachers, moving out of the three existing facilities and coming into the new elementary school. So we will, working through with the building committee and Colliers, will be coordinating a moving company. We're going to probably have a subcommittee or a planning committee that we're going to start probably early spring. Just discussing that move, schedule for teachers packing up all their boxes, how we're going to label those boxes, get all that information, all those materials over to the new school so it'll be ready for staff. So that's the bar you see, sometimes second half of June. Really the start of that will be dependent on when we get out of school, so let's, let's hope for a very mild winter this year. As soon as, as school's out and as soon as we can clear out the teaching materials from Southeast School, we're going to start the building demolition. And that process is going to take a little bit longer than we were hoping originally, but we do have and have put in a plan, which I'm going to show you in a few moments, you know, of how that will affect school opening. Again, the plan is, schools, the brand new school's on time. It's going to open next fall, 2022 for the fall semester. It's going to be very exciting. But the building demolition will impact the timeline for completion of all the brand new parking area. So there will be some modifications that I'll again, show you briefly in a moment of how we're going to address that. We are going to work from the east to the west, from the newer portions of the building towards the original portions of the building. The original portion of the buildings have a little bit more as far as environmental concerns. They can tear down the eastern portion and that's what we need to do to create a temporary bus, or a temporary parent drop-off. With that, we are looking for the main building itself to be completed by July 15th. That means it's going to be ready for furniture and starting to move in some of the materials. You know, I understand the architects had a number of meetings, very close to having our furniture package ready to take that to the state. That package will be coming in front of this group for your approval to take those drawings to the, to the state of Connecticut. We'll, we'll bid that out and then again, from the substantial completion date of July 15th to the end of August, we're going to be moving in all the furniture. So when we move out of the old buildings, it's really just going to be teaching materials. The new school's going to have all new furniture. The architect working with the administration is doing a tremendous job of making sure that there's a lot of flexibility in the spaces. So all new furniture, we're not going to need to bring all these little miscellaneous pieces here and there. It'll be very exciting to have all new furniture in the school. With that, again, this is something we're going to have to coordinate a little bit, but teacher setup, we're anticipating sometime starting in mid to the end of August, just up into and after Labor Day for teachers to get into their rooms, get everything prepped, ready for the kids. And then occupancy of the school right now is slated for September 7th for the, for the school opening. With that, again, the finished parking site, all that work, the final parking lot, all the grading and everything, planting of the final trees, is really going to go all the way to December. So with that Jill, there was one called Parent Drop-Off Fall 2022. If you could bring that up. So this shows, and I don't know if you can slide it up on the screen a little bit?
It's also available in everyone's packet. And for guests, there are copies here, right here on the desk.
Yeah, you're not quite getting the full view of it, but what you see, oh, thank you very much. So what's, what's in essence grayed out, you can see the, on the right-hand side of the page, new school. So that's the brand new school that's built. And then above that, between the current ball fields and that yellow line on the page is the new bus loop. So the new bus loop will be complete. So the buses will come in around the front of the brand new facility and go back out onto Route 89. The purple you see is what we anticipate is some portion of that building still remaining, still standing at the start of school. And the yellow with the red lines indicates a parent drop-off aisle. That's going to utilize some of the brand new parking that's being created, so we're going to use that and we're going to, we're going to grab that for a parent drop-off. It does to the sort of south of that, in between the yellow and the purple, there's approximately 16 parking spaces plus another four handicap accessible spaces that will be available for visitor staff adjacent to the school. We anticipate for a short period of time, you know, some parking will have to be in the, in the gravel area out by the ball fields. So then with the understanding that by the end of December, the purple area will be gone, that, that sort of shaded bluish-green area, that's going to be fenced off. That area will be still under control of the contractor. That'll be under construction till we get to December when we remove the fence, final paving's done and, yep, Jill's gone. I was going to say, we do have one more image that was in your packet and again, it just shows the final completed, thank you Kelly. Yep, the site plan. It just shows the final completed area with the fully completed parking lot to the west of the, of the new school. So again, you know, good news, we're on schedule, but certainly I'm available to answer any, any questions. You know, we've, we've been working very closely with the architect and with Newfield Construction. I think the team's working very well, very effectively and, you know, making sure at this point that we stay on schedule.
Anyone have any comments, David?
At the moment, we don't have anything that is affecting the supply chain. We, we got lucky with some materials such as roofing. The roofer had actually pre-brought some of the roofing materials. I can't say that we're not going to get impacted. We are certainly in a very interesting period and the supply chain is affected. At the moment, we've been able to work through that. We've been jockeying around a little bit of the way that the new school's going to be constructed, looking at availability of steel. So the contractor's sort of changed his approach and how he's going to construct it to put off areas where the steel was going to be a little bit delayed further into the construction. So at the moment, we, we have been working very hard to manage those issues. I, I can't promise you that something isn't going to happen, but we're certainly working very closely as a team to monitor that and to try and minimize any disruption.
Martha?
The other part of David's question for me would be price. One reads about huge price increases in building supplies.
You bid the project out and that's what they own. They, they knew, you know, we bid it in the COVID environment. They knew the market they were going into. So, you know, at the moment, again, I'm happy to say the project is under budget and we're not, the project isn't being directly impacted for price increases because it was already bid.
I have a second question.
Go ahead Martha, please.
No, let others ask theirs and then I'll come back.
Anyone else?
More I think for Kelly based off on that report. So if people have more questions about supplies and stuff.
Sure. I know you guys have had a lot of conversations about this in the building committee, but if you could just briefly describe sort of the recycling and kind of what, how are we going to deal with all of this old school stuff? What we're going to be doing with everything?
Well, there, there's, there's a few different options we have here. Again, the, the one option is, is at the moment being affected by the entire supply chain and shipping boxes and shipping containers, which I guess are all stuck on ship sitting out off the coast of California and you really can't get them. I do know the district owns some shipping containers. One option we're looking at is that there is a, a company that will take any of your serviceable furniture, any of your desks, anything that's viable. They're called the Inreuse Network. We've worked with them on a number of projects and they will pack it in shipping containers. There is a bit of a cost to us, but it, it costs about the same as renting dumpsters and throwing it out as it does to work with this company and pack them in the shipping containers. And then they, they distribute them throughout the world, the third world countries. You actually get a wonderful report on how many tons of materials, you know, supplies, school supplies, desks, chairs, those sorts of things, went off and stayed out of the landfill. So that's certainly one directly from the building that we're, we're working with. As part of Connecticut High Performance, the contractors, as part of their construction, are required to recycle as much of the materials as possible. So that's an ongoing process and that'll be tracked through the contractor and we'll get a report at the end of the, of the project on that as well. So we're, we're very hopeful that we can, we can do something really positive with all the existing older furniture that may still have a little bit of useful life.
Catherine?
I believe that is your, your dumpsters for the facility and trash compaction? You're talking about to the north of the, of the facility? Yes.
It's where you got three pink buildings, looks.
I, I think it's, I think it's that, right there, with the little trees, yeah.
That's exactly where it was.
Yep. Yeah, that's, that's.
Nope, the other slide.
Yeah, those are your, those are your, your trash and dumpster containers.
Oh, my goodness.
No, it's, it's that one, it's, it's showing up pink, I think, on yours, but it's.
The kind of grayish pink, there's three up.
Up, up high.
Higher.
North, up, to the right, up, down. Just to the left where it says Mansfield-Hollow State Park, absolutely, yes. Yeah.
That is recycling?
That's also recycling, yes, that's also school recycling.
And there isn't anything taken from the ball fields, 'cause it just looks like it's very compacted compared to the way it used to be.
I, I'm not sure I follow the question. The ball fields themselves, the configuration of the ball fields are not being touched. Ball Field C is being used at this point for construction purposes, but that field will be restored, so there's no reduction in, in the fields, or.
I just meant like around the surrounding areas and stuff, it just seems like it's better, could be just the disillusion, the illusion of this map.
Yeah, I think it might be, Catherine, because we looked at like the distance to the, the building and the amount of outfield, and none of that is changing. We had several conversations with the Little League and softball leagues in town around this.
And the former ump is very important.
Yes.
Martha, did you have another follow-up?
Yeah, I just was happy that Suzanne asked about recycling the furniture and fixtures, and I think it's really important that they be put on, you know, resold, reused, and, you know, just, however this company decides to do this. Do they, do, do they pay us, or do we pay them to take it away?
No, we, we pay them for the shipping containers, and we pay the movers to move the pieces onto the shipping containers. Once they're on the shipping containers, they take care of them, and they coordinate removal from the site with the trucking company to the shipping company and then distribution throughout the world, so.
So they distribute it to a second market?
Correct, yeah. And, and, and again, if, if we didn't utilize that process, we would have to buy dumpsters, have the movers clear the buildings out with the dumpsters. Now certainly, we've got some time here, the only one we really have to clean out is, is Southeast School, the other schools could remain for, for a period of time. And again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very important that we get that school emptied out as soon as possible, we're gonna hit the ground running to start the demolition process.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm really delighted that we're doing that. And then, I got on the slide that's showing on the bottom left, is that, is that a ball field that will be available for the town to use?
I think that's an older image, I apologize, I was looking for images that I could just present that showed the entire site. There is not an additional, that is, is going to be an open field for play, soccer and so forth, but it will not have a structured baseball, softball field on that, on that site, I apologize.
Okay, so the area to the right is more playground, the blue?
The blue is one, two, and three, four separate playgrounds. The blue space adjacent to the building, or if you go a little further, right there, that is your pre-KK playground. So there are three separate age-appropriately-designed play areas.
Okay, thank you.
And were we able to use different playscapes from the three elementary schools? Because all three have put in new stuff.
We are bringing one of the playscapes that has been designed and certified to come over to this site, yes.
The Vinton playground, which just went in about four or five years ago.
What about all the stuff at Southeast that was there? I mean.
Much of that is, is beyond use because of its age. The Vinton playscape, when it was installed, we were already having conversations about the possibility of a new building, and so it was intentionally installed to be moved. So it had a different installation process, and these playgrounds have to be certified for safety, and that is likely the only equipment that we have that would, would still meet certification for safety after being moved.
So the tire truck is gone.
Yeah, yeah. That's been around a long time.
Any other questions for Scott? Yes, David?
Question on the geothermal, is that coming along as planned? Soil, cement, ore, and everything?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, we had, we had actually drilled as part of the Phase 1 of the project, two geothermal wells initially to, to test them out, test the soil, test the connectivity to the earth and how that was gonna function, and then the rest of the number of wells were designed with that baseline information. So you may have seen, there's been two drilling rigs out there going to town. I believe the geothermal wells are scheduled, final of the 66 wells should be completed by mid-October.
Anyone else? Scott, I, I've heard some pretty wonderful things about Newfield Construction, could you just give me how you feel about things that are working with them right now? Are they?
Yeah, no, I think, again, I think, I think they've, they've been on top of things, they've been very receptive to discussions and working with the administration. You know, school was, was in good shape and ready to be open, I think they understand the sensitivity of working on an occupied site, especially with our most sensitive, you know, smallest children. So, you know, they're, they're, they're doing their best to anticipate, doing their best to work through, again, what we all recognize is probably one of the most challenging periods in our time for construction and logistics and procurement that I think we've ever seen. So again, at, at this point, we're, we're very, very pleased with the way Newfield it was a.
Thank you.
Good hire.
Did you have something for Scott, Rebecca?
Not for Scott, it's more for Kelly.
Okay, anything else for Scott? No, well, thank you very, very much, Scott.
Thank you all.
Thanks for all your hard work, Jill, all your good work.
Thank you for the water.
Oh, you have to return that. Rebecca, did you?
Yeah, I just, and I might be in like a little bit of a state of beginning of the school year PTSD, but seeing a move into the classroom date of August 29th just about caused a panic attack in me as a teacher. And I'm just wondering, like, I know we've kind of talked about this, but if there, like, how you see the beginning of the year happening? Because teachers put a considerable amount of time into setting up their classrooms, and there's like a really tight window from when we would normally start school, and I just wanna make sure that our, our teachers are supported in that because that's ultimately what we need to support our students.
So a, a couple of things, you may have also caught that Scott mentioned a start-of-school-year date in September. I know you haven't set your calendar yet, but when you do, I'm gonna be proposing to you that you wait until after Labor Day for opening next year, so it gives us the greatest window possible in the summer. So August 29th is still a full week, I believe, before students would begin. The other thing is that you may recall, one of the, one of the things I put in the ARP funding, the grant funding, was some additional pay for teachers in paras next summer so that we can have them at school for an extended period of days to really prepare for students being there. I think you're right, you know, in order for this to be a successful experience for students, it has to be a successful experience for teachers, and not only setting up their classroom, these teachers are going to need to learn about students that they've never met before, right? They've never laid eyes on, they don't know the family, you know, our, our small elementary schools right now have that advantage of a lot of familiarity with, with students even if they weren't in your classroom the previous year. So we're looking at using some time next summer, paying teachers for their time and, and using that to really focus on all things transition, not just setting up classrooms, but really getting to know students, as well as working together to do some instructional planning. And there's a, a whole host of transition activities and very, very intentional actions that will occur throughout this school year that the elementary principals worked on over the summer. In fact, we have a kickoff meeting with teachers next Monday afternoon where we're going to do a high-level overview of the building and start to get them excited about what's coming, and at that time, we'll start to talk about some of the transition activities. And then I was thinking, probably around October, we would come to the board and, and share in more detail some of those transition activities so that, that you're aware of, of everything that's going to be happening.
I, I would think it would, it, so it sounds like teachers would be able to be in the building a little bit earlier? I mean, 'cause I would think it would be, you know, it's one thing to see something, a plan on paper, but sometimes like, once you start to walk through spaces, you have to kind of stop and think, oh, wait, what, this that we've always done doesn't work, like, you have to kind of really walk through some of those spaces.
Right, and some of that will be negotiated with the contractor as we approach those dates, once we have a certificate of occupancy as well. My experience with building projects is that it gets a little hairy down at the end, like, you try to set a date, but, you know, you, you just hope that, that the date you set is, is, is gonna happen because of construction and, and housing inspection and, and all of that, so, but that is the, the hope, yes. And it's interesting you mention that, that was actually one of the things we talked about in one of the transition meetings, is people just need time in the building, like, they just need to, almost like kids, like, go on a scavenger hunt, right? Just find your way through, through the building before you even worry about your own classroom.
So that was actually a good segue into what I was gonna ask. So I think that when that whole transition plan is happening, it would be important to be mindful that if you're doing things like family tours or student tours, that they are not happening during the same hours that teachers are in the building setting up their classrooms, because I would find that really overwhelming to have my tasks set on something and then students seeing me in that context, or that would feel overwhelming. So I think that there just should be some mindfulness with having designated hours for those kinds of tasks.
Yeah, we'll work with, with teachers on, on a lot of that work. You know, we try to take a cooperative approach to a lot, a lot of what we do, and so you'll hear in the transition plan when we share that with you about how much opportunity we're providing teachers to really set the direction for much of this.
Any other questions or comments? Catherine?
I just wanna make sure that this is okay with.
Into the mic, Catherine.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure that this is okay with the contracts and all that kinda.
So that's all gonna be worked out, that's why I don't have a full report to give you this evening, so, yes.
I just.
Oh, yes. That's a piece of it, yep.
Martha?
So what is the date of the, to expect the certificate of occupancy?
We don't know that yet, that comes much later in the process.
Okay, now, I, I'm with Rebecca on this, that, you know, I think we need another week, you know, I, I, I just think it's just gonna, gonna take a lot of time to work out kinks and things like that and get people to use, use to the space, so that's my concern as well.
Yeah, it gets a little hairy down when it gets to the end there, but we think we've got enough, we've got a lot of ideas in place to do as much preparation outside of the building as we can also, so that when we have the time in the building, we can really keep it focused on getting to know the building.
We're not gonna be shy about pushing a date back, if we can get teachers in sooner, absolutely. So this is sort of our first real, really blush, but we'll absolutely, we'll be doing our best to get the staff as much time as we can.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, thanks again, Scott. Onto the new school name. The town council's been asked to decide on a name for our new building. They have a deadline to make this decision by the end of the month. They have asked our board to make a recommendation to them from this meeting. I'm very sorry about the short notice, but the town council, I think, was unaware as well. The construction team needs to start the procurement process for signage, so we need to do it at this meeting. So most of the folks that have been working on this, the building committee and state and everyone else, have been referring to the building as Mansfield Elementary School. Many folks think that, folks that have been deeply involved in this project believe that naming it Mansfield Elementary School brings a feeling of consolidation to it, bringing all our kids to feel proud of their one new home, similar to the way the MMS kids feel about MMS. So we have to vote on a name tonight. I would entertain a motion to recommend that the town council, to the town council, that the new elementary school on Warrenville Road be named Mansfield Elementary School. Could I have someone to make that motion?
I'll so move.
Rebecca, thank you. Do I have a second? Edith, thank you. And discussion. Catherine?
Knowing how the schools feel about each other, I would really like to see some kind of an acronym that came up that would include all three schools in it, you know, we don't have to call it, you know, the Dorothy Goodwin, Southeast Vinton thing, but just like letters or an acronym or something like that, because, I don't know, I'm not excited about Mansfield Middle, uh, Elementary School, it does nothing for me. I mean, Dorothy Goodwin was someone who was very important to our community, she's, especially with what Southeast has done with a lot of her beliefs, where, you know, she was very big on recycling, and, you know, Annie Vinton also played an important role, and you don't wanna leave the Southeast family feeling left out either, so I just wish there was some way we could.
Do you have a suggestion for a name?
Just, I don't know if we could do, like, with the letters, play around with the letters, but the, I've been doing that at home, but the problem is, is that you really can't separate Southeast, Goodwin, Annie Vinton, you know, you have to, you should really keep all of those together, so I don't know, it's, I think we really should have a little bit more time to think about it.
I, I, I understand, I think we were all taken aback by the fact that we had to do this now, but we do have to do it, it's procurement issue, so here we are.
I think at some point, we had discussed having some artifacts from all of the old schools represented in the new school, so there will be representation within the school of the other three schools having existed and their signatures. So as long as that part is happening, 'cause I, I think that you have a valid point, but I, I like the Mansfield Elementary School, Mansfield Middle School, kind of just transition and segue, like an MES and MMS thing, so, so I'm in favor of that as a name, but I do think that's important that we recognize that representation from all the schools will be there.
That, that is happening.
Yes, there's a meeting next Tuesday, actually, with a subcommittee of the building committee and the architects and one of their designers to start that process, yep.
Martha?
I just thought of this, what about Mansfield A+G+S Elementary School? That's Annie Vinton plus Goodwin plus Southeast. And because you, the visual with the capital letters with the plus signs is, is kind of an, an interesting visual, so, I mean, that does, and I know there're gonna be things inside the school, but I, just as an idea for the idea that was just thrown out, that's all, thanks.
Anyone else? Edith?
I agree with Kelly that the MMS, MES, you know, staying consistent and keeping something that rolls off the tongue pretty easily, I think if we go with a more complicated name, it's gonna become Mansfield Elementary School anyway. It's my mask, it's so effective. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I was just saying, I, I think if we use anything but Mansfield Elementary School, it's going to become Mansfield Elementary School anyway, because that's what rolls off the tongue, we have Mansfield Middle School.
Thank you, Edith. Catherine?
Yep, you have MMS, and then you're gonna have Mess.
Susannah?
I'm just excited, I know we have a short time to make this decision, and, and I am in agreement with Mansfield Elementary School, but I'm also super excited to hear from teachers and the building committee about how all the different, you know, school, like, all the different events and activities and artifacts that will come together to help support that, you know, your concern, Catherine, about making sure we're honoring all the three schools, and I'm sure it's not just the artifacts themselves, but also other things around kid involvement that'll come out of all the transition stuff you've anticipated, right, Kelly? So, yeah, I, I wish we had more time to play around with this and think about it, but since we don't, I think, yeah.
There's still the opportunity to do things like identify a mascot and school colors and, and those kinds of things that we would, will engage the students in this year, we hope.
Martha? Martha?
One more shot, you could do M A G S, Maggs Elementary School. That's Mansfield, Annie Vinton, Goodwin, Southeast, I mean, you could do Maggs Elementary School.
Because I'd rather send my kid.
Sorry.
I'd rather send my kid to Maggs than Mess.
I believed that when we engaged the community about their concerns about consolidating the elementary schools, I think it was the loss of their neighborhood school feel. And by naming it Mansfield Elementary School, we kind of take that Goodwin, Vinton, Southeast, I don't want to call it competition, but that separation out of it, and we get the kids to understand that now we're all in one building, this is our elementary school, Mansfield Elementary School. And I certainly hear what you're saying, and I have to be honest, I think Kelly, you might have remembered, I tried to play with those letters to do that, and I couldn't come up with anything, so I get, I hear what you're saying.
The V and the G make it tough.
Yeah, it was tough. Rebecca?
I just want to say that I really support the Mansfield Elementary School. I probably wouldn't call it Mess, I'd probably just call it MES, just like we say, we don't try to say Ms., we say MMS. But, and you just kind of encapsulated Kathy exactly why, the sentiment that I like, I like how it unites and it pulls everybody together. And just what I hear so much in the community now when people are talking about it, it's the new Mansfield Elementary School that I hear people talking about, and it almost feels like naturally people have kind of embraced that as that, yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you. All right, superintendent's report on opening of school and enrollment update.
Great, thank you, you have a set of slides at your place and we'll call them up on the screen also. So first off, we've had a very successful opening, I believe. It was another challenging summer, I think in large part because of the fact that we're still operating school in a pandemic, and I think when we left school in June, there were high hopes that this pandemic was on the decline and that we were going to experience more normalcy in our lives, and that hasn't quite come to fruition certainly. And the end of the summer made it that much more challenging as the Delta variant became the primary strain of this virus. But that said, we have had a great opening. When I visited schools and saw our students and teachers, what I saw was people jumping right back into the experiences that they were used to, those things that made school, school. And what I heard from principals a few days after the opening was that staff were comfortable, students were happy to be back. Our families, they described as really craving community. Our schools found ways to bring families together safely prior to school beginning. The middle school, you'll hear about later, ran a couple of outdoor meet and greets. Our pre-K students had opportunities to come individually to school. Our kindergarten students likewise were able to come in to meet their teachers. New students got a chance to tour buildings. These were all things that we weren't able to do last year, and so it was really nice to be able to do that this year. We also took special care thinking about our students who had been fully remote last year, and I was pleased to hear principals say that the fully remote students seemed to jump right in as well and were able to find some of their new friends from their screens last year in their schools, which was nice to hear. So we've got a few pictures here that shows you some of what it looks like on the opening day of school, and these, all of these pictures here were taken the very first day. The thing that always impresses me about the first day of school is that our teachers and students jump right back into the classrooms and within moments of the buses unloading, students and teachers are already involved in instruction. In fact, on the lower left, you see a kindergarten teacher who's actually teaching students how to put the cap on, on a marker and listen for the click. So it's just great. There has been one glitch this year, and that has to do with buses. I actually brought the newspaper from, I think it was yesterday, I don't know if any of you saw this, but we are having a terrible problem with bus drivers all across the state and in fact, even across the country, there've been some pretty public news stories about places that have almost given up on bus drivers in some places and trying to find other ways to get kids to school. Here in Connecticut, they've been talking about this for some weeks and actively recruiting drivers. It takes up to three months to train and credential a driver, given all of the state assessments and background checks and other processes that a driver needs to go through. So we did have this morning our first experience with not having enough drivers. Up until this morning, they've been able to borrow drivers from other bus yards, do some very creative things, even, we've even combined some bus routes, but we probably can't combine routes any further. And this morning, we had two buses that we did not have drivers for. One we knew about last night, one we knew about this morning. I had to reach out to parents and ask them to work with us to find other ways to get their children to school. I've had conversation daily with M&amp;J Bus, we have a meeting on Monday. We had another experience this afternoon, at the last minute, they pulled a bus out of one of our elementary schools. We had students on buses far too long this afternoon from that elementary school. I've already filed my complaint with the bus company, and as I said, we'll have a meeting on Monday. I sent a communication to all parents this afternoon about this to let them know that until things settle down, there may be occasions when they may need an alternate way to get their child to school, unfortunately. But I'll know more on Monday and I'll send out another communication later next week when I have some more details about how we're going to resolve this. The M&amp;J Bus seems to believe that things will get better, but it's, these first few weeks are going to be kind of rough.
Do you mind taking questions now?
Not at all, no.
Kelly and then Catherine?
I'm sure you guys have done a lot of creative thinking on this, but is there any possibility of having existing people elect out of using the bus and then being able to combine routes that way to minimize buses?
Yes, that is one of the things, that's one of the things that, we already have several parents who drive students, their children in, and what happens is the bus drivers learn over time who's not riding the bus. It helps them shorten their routes. But that was one of the ideas we talked about today and we'll try to solidify that next week, but I do think that will be one of our strategies.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if people in our community as a whole know the reasons behind that, you may have people who can drive choose to, to help eliminate that for people who really don't have an option.
I think you're right.
Catherine?
So did they lose bus drivers from when the pandemic started? Because I know that we continued to pay them.
Yes, and in fact, we did continue to pay them and they continued to pay their drivers as well. You have to remember, that situation was a year ago March. We had drivers last school year, right? They were short, they weren't, they didn't have the number of substitutes that they enjoyed in the past. But we didn't have these problems last year, they ran buses all year for us, right? We did not reduce the number of buses last year. So I think this year, it's a combination of people deciding not to work or possibly because of the virus, being fearful of coming back now because things have not gotten better. And you know, the vaccine mandate will apply to drivers as well, and although I do not know if this has affected the M&amp;J drivers, I have heard that from some other superintendents that the companies they use have lost some drivers because they don't want to participate in the weekly testing or get vaccinated.
Rebecca?
I would just say, I know that this is like a national problem. This is not just something with M&amp;J, I mean, it's a national problem. Do I remember hearing at some point that, like, do we, is there, like, I don't even know how to say this, that, like, do we have to reimburse families if they drive their kids to school because we can't provide transportation?
No, we don't, we don't have to, there is an allowance in our transportation policy that if we do not provide transportation, that we, in lieu of us providing transportation, we can ask parents to transport their children. That usually happens only in, with students who are out of district. So if we have a student that's attending, say, a special education environment in another community, one option, if we so offer it to the parent, is for the parent to drive that student to school every day and for us to pay that parent. The suggestion that Kelly had made, that would just be voluntary, that wouldn't be based on, you know, us paying them.
And I've been hearing so much about this lately, so I'm sorry if I'm getting this confused, but have we been, like, having buses do a second run after they drop kids off? Was that us or is that somewhere else I heard this?
No, we have not tried that yet. Part of our challenge is that we have the three tiers, right? So our buses do EO and then the middle school and then the elementary school. So really, the only place you could have a bus come back and do a second run is the elementary school, because if you do it at either the other two sites, it pushes everything that comes after it really late. So we haven't done that yet, it is one of the things, though, that we are talking about to see if there's a way we could accept students earlier at our school or have some students stay a little later. It'll be part of the discussion next week. We've been timing the arrival times of buses to see if we think we might be able to squeeze that in somewhere.
Catherine?
Could we maybe bring times closer between the middle school and the elementary school so that you can have elementary and middle school kids on the same bus?
Well, I thought about that as well, and I don't know if that works because of how spread out the three elementary schools are right now, but that is something else I'm going to ask them about on Monday. Is there any way if we changed our start times? That may have some other labor issues for us as well, but it's certainly something to talk about.
I think I recall that at one point, if the bus company doesn't provide a bus, there are financial repercussions, so how are we looking at that?
This contract's a little bit different than the contract that we had with Durham, but when they condense runs, they then credit us for not having employed a bus. So it's all in their monthly statement. In fact, they did combine runs a couple of times last year and we saw that reflected in the monthly statements that they provided to us.
But not having two buses, not running two buses, is there a daily fee for that or a daily number?
So again, the provision that you may be recalling was a very specific penalty provision that was in the contract that we had with Durham Bus. That penalty provision is not in this contract, but certainly that will be one of the other things to discuss, is if you don't provide me with the service you're contracted for, I'm not going to pay you for the full contract. And I have to say, they were very good about that last year. I assume that they'll be honest with us about that again.
David?
Oh, absolutely, yep. Yeah, not only that, the middle school did a check of their absence list against the bus list, and they were prepared, in fact, I never did talk to Candace at the end of the day, but they were prepared to call any student who was on one of the buses that didn't have transportation today to see if the reason they weren't in school was because of transportation and then make sure that they got the child to school, yep.
Any other questions or comments?
David, I do just want to clarify one thing, you said you didn't check your email. I hope that was about a high school bus, because we did ours through phone. That was high school, okay, good.
Enrollment?
Sure. Oh, can I tell you a little bit about professional development? I just don't want to skip over that, because I have some exciting news to share there too when it comes to all the things that we did. You know, before school begins, our teachers come in for three days. We engage them in professional development that we believe is collaborative and just-in-time supports giving them the information and the knowledge they need to be able to support students, not just on day one, but throughout the school year. And our professional development is definitely tied to the strategic plan that we've developed and is designed to really further our work. And so the list here describes to you some of the things that our teachers were engaged in, teachers and support staff were engaged in this summer, in those three days just before school began. The highlight for me really was seeing more than 150 teachers or so talk about their professional growth goals from the teacher evaluation plan after finally getting a full year with that revised plan, and hearing the response from teachers about the passion and excitement that their colleagues engaged in as they sought goals to both improve student outcomes and develop their own knowledge base, and that's teacher evaluation. And you don't hear too many people talk about teacher evaluation with passion, so I was pretty excited to know that that seems to be hitting well. Now I'll go to enrollment. So our enrollment is doing just what we expected it to do. It is starting to decline a little bit more. You can see here the numbers for September of 2021 and enrollment in June of 2021. Goodwin has dropped about nine students, Southeast has added two students, Vinton has also added two students, and the middle school has dropped 35 students for a total reduction across the district of 40 students. And again, that is consistent with what we were expecting to see happen. The interesting thing again this summer is a very limited number of new enrollment, or new enrollees suggesting that the families that used to move in, especially our international families, are not coming with quite the same tendency that they did pre-COVID. The other thing that you had asked me about recently, and these are not final numbers because they are not yet confirmed, and it looks like I reversed the numbers, excuse me. So don't look at what's on the screen, listen to what I tell you. Last year in June, we had 15 students who had chosen to homeschool. Currently, we have 21 students listed. However, there is a statutory obligation for parents to notify us annually of their intention to homeschool. We've sent letters to all of the families that we've not yet heard from regarding their intentions for education this year, and there are about nine or 10 students whose families have not replied to us yet, so we will be following up with them next week. And when we do our October 1 enrollment report, I will have firm numbers for you on homeschool. But I believe when you asked me about it a few weeks ago, it was because you were wondering if parents were choosing not to have their students come to school this year out of concern for the virus. I can tell you of the students on our list right now, we expect, based on what parents have told us, nine of them to return once they're vaccinated, like nine new children that chose homes, whose families chose homeschooling this year, told us, "It's because I'm uncomfortable with children being in school not vaccinated, and once they are vaccinated, I intend to re-enroll my children in school." So I think even that is not a terribly large number when you consider the number of families who chose remote learning last year, having about nine of them this year. about nine of them this year really, really want, wanting their children to stay out of school is, is, is not, is not that, not that many, I guess.
Is there any remote learning?
No, remember, we have no allowance for remote learning this year.
They didn't know if some, some students with special requirements, if they are remote learning?
Nope. We have nobody who has required that this year.
Rebecca?
You might be addressing this later, but how are we handling students who need to quarantine because of potential exposures?
And we've had some already. Unfortunately, there are a couple of community issues that popped up even before school started. And so we're doing that on a case-by-case basis, based on whether or not the child is ill, first off, right? Based on how much support the, the child, especially if it's a young child, has at home. We're doing everything from providing work, as we would if you were just out sick, to giving the students opportunities to Zoom into the classroom. So again, we're really trying to do it based on individual needs. But thus far, what I've heard from principals is that they've been able to put together some pretty personalized packages for kids.
Anyone else? Questions?
Okay. I'm just going to mention one other thing here. I think if you saw, I can go down to the next slide. I think if you saw the packet that I sent you from convocation, you saw a very similar slide, just showing you that we were also very active this summer. Ran a lot of professional learning experiences. The Equity Institute, by far the most successful of our experiences. And you saw on the August Days list that now every one of our certified staff has gone through at least the first day of that equity training, and we will continue to make sure that every staff member, certified or not, in Mansfield, has had that four-day equity experience before the year is out. We ran a math book club this summer with twenty-three teachers that participated. We had twenty-two staff that taught in our summer school program. Seven students, excuse me, seven teachers who spent a week designing some problem-based learning experiences. And so again, very active learning summer for our staff. And I put at each of your places a new book that's come out by Ken Kay and Suzy Boss. I know you all know Ken Kay. He's, he's spoken to you before. He is the director of the, a former director of Ed Leader Twenty-One, a great network of national schools that are working together on promoting really good twenty-first century teaching and learning. And he and this woman, Suzy Boss, who's also a real leader in instruction, and whose work we have read here in Mansfield, interviewed about two-hundred-and-fifty people to put this, this book together of successful strategies for schools that are really trying to bring about student success in the area of really engaged, deep learning. We're very pleased to announce that there were several staff members in Mansfield who were interviewed for this book, and several of those interviews found their way into the text, including our Portrait of the Graduate and our Definition of Student-Centered Learning are in here. There's a bit of an index in the back. It's, it's a little bit clunky, but, and it doesn't identify every staff member who's been mentioned in here. But take a look, because you'll see some, some really nice recognition for, for, for our staff and, and the work that's been done in this district. And I talked to somebody recently who said, you know, "I'd really like to try to get Ken Kay to come and talk to this, this group of teachers that I'm working with. I'm reading his new book." And I said, "Oh, did you see us in it?" And she said, "Yes, I did." So that was really fun to be able to say that for the first time to somebody.
Congratulations, Kelly. You know, administrators, everyone, just what a, what a feather in your cap. And congratulations. That's just wonderful.
Thanks.
Wonderful work.
Okay.
Summertime?
Yeah. So I was just keyed up summer by talking about some of the professional learning experiences. Typically, at this meeting, I also give you a report on what has happened over the summer. And so I've asked Dr. Shamien Patwa and Candace Morell to share with you work that happened in summer school as well. And I'm not sure if one of you has a preference on who's going to start, but invite you both up. Why don't you both come up to the table and you-
I ask a question while they're transitioning.
Yeah.
What is happening with the nurse situation right now?
I could fill you in on that, too.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize you would talk about that.
Well.
Well, I, I'll feel, I'll, I'll take care of that. We had two nurses the week before school started who had illnesses, both of them of a more extended nature. And we filled in with some substitutes as, as best we could, but I believe as of this afternoon, we have hired additional nurses, and it, it looks like we've got that situation stabilized.
Oh, okay, great. I do live in the Vinton School District, so I've had a lot of people approach me about it. I said I would ask.
Hi, good evening. It is nice to see everybody in person for a change. The Extended School Year Intervention, we have a, we don't have a pithy name, I'm sorry. But just to remind you, the program is designed for students with IEPs or students who have academic difficulties or require some supports. We start early with nominating who would be part of the program by having special ed teachers, interventionists, principals, and gen ed teachers talk about who they think would benefit from a summer program. And then we reach out to parents to see if they'd be interested. The program is nine to twelve, and it's Monday through Thursday, which hasn't changed since the program began. What has changed, this year we went for more of a robust program. The components of the day included morning meeting, small group reading. We added a PE component, which was centered around cooperative game playing, and then a writing block, which was actually visual literacy with Laura Hunter. And then there were specialized services, of course, per IEP. So you had the OT, PT, speech, specialized reading support or instruction, and math instruction. We had forty-six students at various points. That is the largest number we've had in our summer program. And two special ed teachers, one reading interventionist, PE teacher, classroom teachers, and a teacher for writing. So it was quite a wonderful group of people, and thirteen amazing paraeducators as well. So what was unique this year, the door-to-door transportation, which was very helpful, and breakfast and lunch was included. So each kid was allowed to have a grab-and-go breakfast, grab-and-go lunch. And the other big part was the partnership with Kent Mansfield. So we promoted that when we were enlisting kids to come to our summer school. And as you are aware, there's a grant in town right now, so families could go. The, the camp relationship was fifty percent. Families could pay fifty percent for the camp fee. If they qualified for the other supports, they could essentially go for camp for the weeks that we were having summer school for next to nothing. And it was a really wonderful program. And we helped, you know, advocate and, and complete paperwork and, and do whatever we could to encourage families to take advantage of this opportunity. Some highlights of the program, again, you know, in the past, we focused on the academics because that was the purpose. But we realized that the academics and the social-emotional, especially this past year, were important. So that was a real piece of the program. And I'm happy to say that all students who were assessed either made growth in the area of reading or maintained their skills. And that's really, you know, our hope. And then we incorporated, as I mentioned, the visual literacy and writing with Laura Hunter. And her focus was on identity. So she used themes from Tar Beach, the Immigrant Eyes project from the Benton Museum. And she used haikus and gallery walks. And the other thing we were really excited about, and I know it's not a huge thing, but there were sketchbooks. Each child got a sketchbook, and most importantly, they had colored pencils that included flesh-toned colors. And if you have any variant of skin tone, it's, it's a treat to see a wider range of colors. And the next side, I think one child took advantage of it. You probably can't read this, but I just love that one on the right is a, is a flower. And she says, she's counting her syllables, if you look really closely, and it's, I've cut it off here, but it's, I think it was violets, violet hibiscus. Is that what it says now? I can't even see it now. Beautiful, shining flower.
Soft petals.
Soft petals blowing. And you see the syllable count on the bottom, which I thought was really sweet. And then the other one is, "My name is Nick D. I have blue eyes." I can't see from here, but blue eyes and, and green eyeballs, I think, or something like that. And I have teal-blue earrings. So that was part of the work. And, and it was fun, and it was creative. There's a picture there of a gallery walk that the kids, all the kids came through. They wrote comments on everyone's work, and they were encouraged. And then on the, on the right is just, "We assessed reading wherever we could." And it was really a, a great summer. I think we had wonderful attendance, and kids came back each day very happy.
Shamien, may I ask, I think you said forty-six student participants. Is, is there a cap to this, or we're trying to grab everyone that we can?
Yes. You know, it's a balance of how much staff and how much, you know, I think the nature of the kids that come, really, we want to have the class sizes fairly small and make sure that we're meeting their needs. So I don't, I wouldn't say there's a cap, but knowing how many children are there. And we did our best to try to get children there.
Great, thank you.
So, good evening. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What grades did this include?
Pre-K through six.
What about seven and eight?
They were invited. I'm just telling you the number of, of the, the grades of the range of the kids who came. But we did invite eighth graders, too. It depended on IEP goals and objectives, too. We had some students that were in seventh and eighth grade, but they chose not to come this summer.
I just want to say, I love Laura Hunter's visual literacy. We have the opportunity to see that in sixth grade, and it's just really fantastic. So I, I will talk a little bit about the MMS Learning Pathways Program, and that is a program that included students that were in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade at MMS, which means they would be next year sixth, seventh, and eighth. Our program consisted of a four-week program, nine AM to one-thirty PM. We had four staff members and then one artist in residence with our collaboration with the Hartford Stage. We had thirty-three students participate in the program. And the structure of that program was students participated in an hour and forty-five minute, one hour and forty-five minute session in the morning. They then had lunch and a bit of a break, and then they did an additional one hour and forty-five minute session in the afternoon and culminated at one-thirty. And we, too, had great attendance for the program. Students were engaged in the experience. The goal of our program was to expose students to learning experiences that connected them to their future college and career pathways. So making the connection between what they were doing here in school in the summer experience and seeing connections to their future. Jill, you can actually, yep, that's perfect. Thank you. The structure of our program offered opportunity for students to build connections and develop new skills in, in new and interesting and engaging ways. So again, really trying to make sure that they're understanding the connection between the content and how it has relevance to what they're doing now, but their future. So the program that we had designed actually encompassed four different areas. We had a two-week session of robotics that was bookended, also connected to the Theater Works with Hartford Stage. And then we had another two-week session of filmmaking and graphic design that, again, was connected with the Hartford Stage. So the first two-week session, we focused on robotics. Students focused on engineering and problem-solving skills for one hour and forty-five minutes a day. They experienced the design process, thinking about how you design, you build, you test, you redesign, you test, you redesign again. And one of the things that I noticed in, in visiting the groups when they were working through these designs and building these robots, was the amount of problem-solving and perseverance that they had to exhibit every day. They had to work collaboratively in a team and think about what worked in their design, what didn't, and what did they need to make adjustments on next. So those skills, whether you're working with robots or you're in your day-to-day work-life experiences, are, are part of what we do. Students also engaged in a two-week session of filmmaking. In this session, students began to understand the concept of storyboarding, bringing an idea to life. And then they learned how to plan. They practiced the art of revision. They engaged in deliberate decision-making on what they would edit and what they would edit out of their videos. And then they really worked together in coming to agreement on what their polished piece would look, look like. The picture on the left is actually from one of the videos that a student created over the summer, and it was a series of sketches that she crafted. And then she did some stop-motion animation video filmmaking to put that piece together. And in other cases, they planned out and storyboarded, storyboarded a, an idea that they then brought to life through acting it out, whether indoors or outdoors. Another piece of the work that they did was in the area of graphic design, and in particular, how you develop visual representations of information, or in this case, in some cases, data, that they wanted to present for an audience. Again, a skill set of thinking about what information do we want to collect and convey in our work, and how do we convey it in a meaningful, meaningful way? Often, when I'd ask students when they were working on that component, "How does this connect to work that you do in school?" They were able to identify how they might connect it in a math lesson, or sometimes in some of the social studies work they've done. And lastly, we had collaboration for four weeks with an artist in residence from the Hartford Stage. In this particular four-week program, all students engaged in the, in the, the process of writing and performing their own original skits for an authentic audience. The work that they did was, was anchored in mentor text and the reading standards. And over the course of four weeks in small groups, they came up with an idea. They brought it to life, again, through planning and storyboarding and practicing. And then at the end of the four-week experience, they had an audience come in that they performed these for. And what was most compelling to me was these skits were authentic, important to them, based on their experience as a middle school adolescence individual. And in one case, a student that, you know, I wouldn't have expected, wrote his own skit, got his classmates and peers to perform with him, and he performed. And it was just amazing to see how proud they were of their experience. So we saw that as an extent, and, and a successful first step in transforming our summer experience for our middle school students.
Catherine?
Don't take this the wrong way, but I'm a little bit confused of how you, how it went. You said that there was two weeks of robotics.
Mm-hmm.
There was filmmaking and graphic design that were two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And they were in conjunction with the Hartford Stage, and then also the filmmaking and the graphics were in conjunction. Then I-
So, no, so there, there was two, there's four weeks of summer, of the summer program. Two weeks of robotics, and at the same time, students participated in four weeks of the Hartford Stage. The robotics unit only lasted two weeks, so then we implemented another two weeks of filmmaking and graphic design.
So the people who did robotics went into the-
They all, every student engaged in all of those experiences.
Okay. Thank you.
It was the way we had to structure the day.
Like a morning and an afternoon.
It's morning and afternoon flipping the day.
You know, it's just that I'm taking notes, and then she's, you know, she says, "Well, it was four weeks with the artists in residence," and I'm-
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Candace, I, I may have missed this. How did you select the students? How?
So the selection process is, it's our, our program, we look at students that have some, they might be struggling math students, struggling readers. Some also might be students that might not have opportunity to have exposure to these type of learning experiences. And we're really fortunate. Many of our students have the opportunity to do a wide variety of summer camps. We also recognize there's a large portion of our student body that do not have those opportunities. So in thinking about, we want all students to see themselves as having access to these opportunities, that they see themselves and what they want their future lives to be. these opportunities, that they see themselves and what they want their future lives to be. And we recognize, in some cases, we have to build those experiences in for some of our students to begin to see themselves that they could do this. And so, um, we really looked at, um, who would benefit from additional sort of reading, problem-solving, um, engineering experiences over the summer. We also gave some thought to, uh, those students in our student population that might not have these type of rich summer learning experiences and how do we also draw them in? Because we know if we want them to see themselves in their futures potentially exploring one of these career paths, they have to have access to it at some point. So, it's a balance and blend.
Well, is there a cap on this program as well?
Well, there is because, um, you have to have, is similar to what Shemee mentioned, you have to have the staffing to be able to support, uh, students in this work. Uh, we had thirty-four students. That's pretty much the max with the staffing that we had because you do have to break them down into smaller groups and really work with them. Robotics design is not easy. Um, they really just require small groups to, to coach them through some of the design challenges they're faced with. Um, so, yeah, we were, we were at the upper regions of, of enrollment.
Oh, it just sounds like a wonderful experience. Catherine?
What was the grade level of these?
The students that participated, uh, were students going into sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade.
Any other questions or comments? Sounds like it was a very productive, very productive summer. Thanks for all your work.
So, the, the last slide, I'll talk to a little transition, um, just to share a little bit of information about what we've done to build connections with families new to MMS. New to MMS in grade five and grade six. As you know, our, our grade six students, um, didn't have the traditional getting-to-know-you experience in their fourth grade year, simply because we were in the midst of a pandemic. So, we were very, uh, mindful last year, knowing that at some point, we needed to offer some transition opportunities, not only to our fifth-grade families, but to our sixth-grade families who had literally not been in our building yet as sixth-grade parents. Uh, we were very fortunate last spring. Uh, we were able to rethink the getting-to-know-you event and fourth-grade families last spring were able to come in. Um, I think we learned a lot from that experience and the model we built, we're going to, going to keep. Smaller groups is better. Uh, so, we really thought about also with our fifth grade, we know that often transitioning to the middle school, there's enthusiasm and excitement, there's also a little bit of nervousness. It's new, it's bigger, what to expect. Uh, so, our grade five team really thought through, how would they build in an opportunity before school started on the thirty-first to invite families in, students knew their homeroom teacher in advance, they came and they met their homeroom teacher and their two-person teaching team. Uh, we did this outdoors. Uh, the teachers had a great, uh, you know, sort of activities to complete as well as a scavenger hunt, which included getting to know interesting facts about their teachers on the fifth-grade team. Uh, families came for about an hour, kids got an icy treat before they left. Um, and people in an informal setting had the opportunity to put a face with a name and students in the same homeroom had opportunity to get to know each other a little bit. Um, coming from three elementary schools, that was important. Um, and I think it set, um, a lot of, uh, students prior to their first day at ease of what to anticipate on the first day of school. That same night, uh, an hour later, we had a sixth-grade meet-and-greet. This one, we did inside. Um, we were, we felt it was really important to get families into the building to see the classrooms in the physical space because they just had not had the opportunity. Uh, teachers were in their classrooms, it provided opportunity for them to tour through informal greetings. These students also knew their homeroom teachers prior to coming in, so they were able to have some conversation together. Um, and they had locker introductions because these kids did not have lockers last year. So, one of the highlights was watching parents help their children unlock their lockers, um, trying to bring back their memories of how a locker, locker combination works. So, in that respect, uh, we noted that perhaps it gave parents a little compassion to the challenges their students faced around their lockers in the first few days of school. Um, they too, uh, had opportunity to have an ice cream on their way out. Uh, I think both were very positive. We heard feedback from parents thanking us so much because it's been the first time they've been in the building. Um, and it was just, I think, very, very positive for teaching staff as well to get to meet parents before school started. So, we're really pleased that we're able to offer that.
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah, I, I'll just, um, thank, um, both, uh, Shemee and Candace for really rethinking the, the summer program. Uh, we were able to, this year, to use some of the ESAR, um, two grant funds, uh, to support some of these new initiatives, but we really wanted to use it as an opportunity for us to think differently about how we support especially struggling students or students who don't have opportunities, uh, in the summer in ways that we can replicate in the future. Uh, even the Hartford Stage experience, you know, that was something done with us. It wasn't them coming in and offering the program so that we have staff now who know how to do that work as well. So, um, it, just really, um, great program. And you can hear how it connects to all of the other really important work that we're doing. So, nice job.
Yes, thank you very much, Candace and Shemee. Thank you. Teacher evaluation waiver?
Yeah, um, I'll take this in. Peter Dar is in the audience. If there are any, um, questions, uh, Peter, as you know, co-chairs the Required, um, Educator Evaluation and Professional Development Committee that we have. Uh, and, um, that is the committee that, that writes our evaluation plan and monitors it. And, um, they, uh, met, uh, online recently to consider a waiver that's being offered by the state this year. Again, you may remember from having approved our evaluation plan that there are certain components of, uh, that plan that are required by, um, state, both, um, statute actually and regulations. And this year, as they did last year, the state is allowing us some flexibility with the focus areas for our student growth goals and, uh, allowing teachers to identify, um, goals in social and emotional learning, student engagement and engaging families, cul- cultural responsiveness, um, as well as academic achievement. So, it's an, it's an expansion of the focus of the student evaluation, um, goals. And, um, the committee, um, very much was in favor of this. This, uh, same waiver was allowed to us last year and you approved it. And what we found was that, uh, several of our teachers, especially in the areas of student engagement and, um, cultural responsiveness, uh, excuse me, and social and emotional learning, those three areas, uh, many of our, our goal projects were around those really important, um, topics. So, the request is for you, um, the committee has, has a, has requested the waiver. You need to approve, um, that request so that it can go on to the state. Um, and, um, we can take advantage of the waiver. So, I believe you have a motion before you and I can answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions? I, I do have one question. Did we get feedback from, from staff as to the impact of this?
So, um, I.
I know that there's a committee.
Yeah, no, uh, we didn't ask that question, um, specifically, but I shared, um, as part of the report that I gave you about our, uh, professional development work before school, that one of the activities was the sharing of the professional growth goals among teachers. And we have a complete list of, um, the titles of all of their action research projects. And so, I've been able to see in that list, a number of projects that were focused on, as I mentioned, social, emotional, um, student engagement and cultural responsiveness. And it was quite impressive to see the number of teachers that took advantage, uh, of the waiver to, to create goals in that area.
Okay, so there is a connection, okay, thank you. Yes, Martha?
Uh, we are inform, excuse me, we are informally, uh, doing some evaluations of our own on our staff. Just, we're just not submitting it to the state. Is that what I'm getting?
No, um, so, this is, it's, uh, yeah, it is a little more involved than that. The state requires us to do evaluations annually. Uh, in that evaluation, teachers need to have observations of their practice. Our administrators go in and observe them, that's one component. Another component required by the state is that every teacher establish a goal to support student learning with student, specific student outcomes. Typically, that goal has to be focused on academics. What the state is allowing is that goal to be focused on this broader list of topics. So, we are still evaluating, we still have to report our, our evaluation efforts to the state. It's just that we're broadening the topics that, that teachers can focus on.
Any other questions? Edith, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Can you hear me? Is that good? Okay. Motion to request a waiver from the Connecticut State Department of Education to allow teacher goals in the Mansfield Education Evaluation Plan for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two to focus on social and emotional learning, student engagement, engaging families, cultural responsiveness, and/or academic achievement.
Thank you, Edith. Do we have?
A second, that?
Second, thank you, Rebecca. Any further discussion? Catherine?
Yes.
Yes. Any?
It's pretty much what's in your packet currently. It's that statement, um, number one.
All right, any other questions? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Motion passes, thank you very much. Okay, update on school building project.
Yes, um, one of the things I wanted to mention to you is, and I, I can't recall if I've mentioned this expressly before, but every other week, there is a meeting that occurs between the owners, meaning, um, us, um, um, so, myself, uh, as, as one of the owners of this project, the architects, so the architects from TSKP, and, um, the owners' reps, so Colliers, and the construction company. And, uh, it's a pretty big group. Uh, Alan Corson and Bill Treach from Facilities are there every week, uh, with me as well. Um, usually a principal's with me. And, um, we meet every other week to learn about how the project is coming along and to discuss any questions that somebody has, any more decisions that need to be made, any changes that need to be made. It's an incredibly valuable and detailed conversation and it is really helping, um, us stay intimately aware of everything that's happening on this site. So, I put in a, a recent picture from the site, although I have to say, there was a school building committee meeting this afternoon and they have some amazing drone photos of the site where you can now start to see the real shape of the, the building. And I'll, I'll try to get those, um, photos to you so that you can see them, they're just incredibly exciting. Uh, but the other thing that I wanted you to, to, uh, to remind you of is that we have a clickable link right on our homepage of our website called Watch Our School Grow. And you can watch in, um, real-time construction that's happening at the site. And there's also a button that you can click so that you can see time-lapse photos to see how, um, the, the work on the, the site is progressing. So, we really hope that, that people, um, will look at that often. And I know the students at Southeast School are going to be very busy this year, uh, watching the, the construction right outside their windows also. So, the project is going very well. You heard Scott say that the construction company is doing a great job of looking ahead at procurement, um, issues and reworking the construction schedule. So, one of the questions every two weeks is, uh, are we still on the critical path to completion or is anything getting in the way of that critical path? And every week, we're, we hear, nope, we are still on the path to completion. So, um, it, it just feels really good. So, that's the only, um, uh, real update. I was going to mention transition, but I've talked about that already. And as I said, we'll share, uh, more about that, uh, in a meeting later this fall.
Martha?
Seeing the, uh, brick building there, um, it just, um, ricocheted off of my mind. Um, what are we doing on voting? Uh, it, this is like an off-the-wall question, but.
No.
In November, when schools are closed or, I mean, there's traffic patterns, is, how, how is that being handled?
So, Southeast is not a voting site, but, uh, the only school that's used for voting is Vinton. Um, the library is, uh, a site, but the traffic won't be affected there at all. Um, the bigger question is, what happens if they, if the town chooses to mothball Vinton? Where will that district vote? And, um, I've been having conversations with, um, the registrar of voters about that for two years now. I don't know what the answer is to that yet.
I just remember one time voting at, a couple of times voting at Southeast, that's why I asked.
Oh, yeah, no longer.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Nope.
Suzanne?
Oh, I just wanted to, you know, there's many, many exciting things, but this live stream is so exciting. It's very wonderful and it's great to be able to watch stuff. And, um, the time lapse is terrific, so I try to remember to look at it on a regular basis if I'm not driving by. So, thank you for providing that.
Yeah.
Did I hear today that we're five percent complete?
You did. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yep. And finally, I'll just close out with the roof update. Um, I mentioned that the, the last meeting materials have been delivered. Uh, we have no other updates since then, but no reason to think that they will not be starting that project in October. There was some interior work that was done this summer, um, and I believe that was finished on schedule. So, uh, we're just waiting for the rest of the materials to arrive and they will start second shift working on the middle school roof. And, um, we have had a lot of heavy rain and the need for a new roof has shown itself several times at MMS. So, fingers crossed that we don't have another bad storm in the next month.
Candace and Larry are walking around with the buckets?
Almost, yep.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Um, we don't have any new business. That brings us to our second hearing for visitors. Anybody want to address the board? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? David, thank you, may I have a second? Thank you. Uh, Martha?
Yeah, I, I wondered if we could separate and have two, divide it into the new hires and the other three paragraphs, just separate the, um, first three paragraphs from the new hires, if we could do that, please.
Asking for two consent agendas?
If we could, please. Thank you.
What, what would that benefit, or how would that help?
I just wanted to ask some questions about the second part.
In other words, she's in favor of all of those, but.
I understand, okay. Do you have questions about it now, Martha? I don't want to let that go if you do.
No, I, I can do, I can do that, but I have no questions with the first three sentences, the first three. It's just the second block and so, I didn't.
It's all part of one agenda. I think you can ask a question about any part of it that you choose.
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, as I look at this, I, um, wonder how many, um, of the new hires are representative of, um, different ethnicities?
Ethnicities or, or?
Minority hiring.
Minorities. Um, I suspect that there are, um, no hires, uh, among the certified staff. Remember, there's a whole other list of non-certified staff.
I was just looking at the certified staff.
Right, among the certified staff, I would say in this group, um, that, um, my assumption is that all of these people identify as, uh, the majority, uh, race.
Well, that's disappointing to me.
Yep.
Uh, because we have been charged with facilitating, uh, aggressively minority hiring. And so, I just want to state my real disappointment with that.
Yep.
Can I just say, sorry, and, and, and I am too. I also just know very well that it's a, it's a problem nationally and it's not even about who we're choosing to hire, it's who's choosing to go into education. And, um, I know it's a, it's a major discussion in education about the fact that, um, you know, and I think it's a, it's a sticky snowball or something, I don't know if snowball's the right analogy. Sticky, snowballs aren't usually sticky either, that was horrible. Um, you, yeah. Um, because, you know, I think, there, there are, their minorities are underrepresented in teacher education prep programs. And so, it means we have less minorities graduating from these programs who are even applying for jobs. So, that, that pool that we have is a lot lower. And I think the thing that grieves me most about this, and I, I've, I've spoken with minority teacher candidates who say they never once had a teacher of color. And so, it's so, they never saw that as a. And so, it's so, they never saw that as a career path for them, because they, they didn't see themselves represented in their teachers. And so, it's, it's a really difficult situation. I would love to see our district be a place where, where kids can see themselves anywhere, but also, even if you're not of minority, have those experiences in a more diverse world. But it's so frustrating, I know, in education, because minorities are underrepresented in teacher prep programs to begin with.
And I think I've shared with you that when we have had minority candidates, especially as we have them from the university as interns, it's, it's, it's challenging sometimes to convince teachers of color to work in communities such as this, because they also are very interested in, for understandable reasons, for working in communities where more students of color reside, because they would like to have their students of color see teachers of color. And the other thing I'll remind you of is that we have started working on this more aggressively, but it's not a one-year fix.
No, I've been advocating for this for as long as I've been on the board, which is, you know, over fifteen years. And I just see zero progress.
Well, I think you, you can't look-
Other organizations are doing this and are being successful.
Yep.
And they are just deep diving and, and making this work. And we, I don't think we are, so.
No, it doesn't help when you get resignations in June either, because, you know, then you're, you're left trying to, to find people quickly. I don't disagree with you, Martha. I think it's incredibly important. And I will say that we have had more success in our non-certified ranks than we have in our certified ranks.
Catherine?
Just out of curiosity, how do you go about finding these people and on this list? And is there any active recruitment in schools that do have minority? Or is it, you know, how, how do, how do we go about finding?
So, that's, that's a, a long discussion, but so, first off, the best place probably to, to look for teachers of color is to go into colleges that have robust numbers of minority candidates. And I've had this conversation with people at UConn. UConn's having the same problem we are, although the last conversation I had, they, their most recent class has, has more candidates of color.
We're doing better.
Yeah.
We're working on it, though. It's really multi-year.
I can imagine it's a terrible challenge, you know, and I, I, you know, I'm not trying to say that nobody's doing their job. It's just, you know, how are we going about it?
Right.
Because it is a challenge.
It is.
And as Martha says, we have been talking about this, what seems like forever.
And you really have to recruit out of state, to be honest, to really find the, the best pool of candidates. I think the few communities that I know that have had some success in this have done that. The other thing I want to remind you is that when we're talking about students seeing themselves in their teachers, if you look at the number of staff, excuse me, the number of students who identify as a race other than white, the majority other race is really Asian. And so, we do have, and we, we have had some success in hiring teachers who also identify as Asians. So, some recruiting years are better than others, and, and this was, was not a good one. Last year, we had much better success with our certified staff.
Can I just say that, you know, I think that us putting explicit language into our, oh, gosh, hell, I'm sorry, the tornado warning did me in this morning. What, what is the thing we created?
Strategic plan?
Thank you, the strategic plan. Having put that actual language in there, that we are looking to teach an anti-racist curriculum, will help to attract, and that will be something people are mindful of, who are interested in that. I also think that we do a lot by having student teachers from a university, because there are many districts that don't have that opportunity. So, I think that I see us taking advantage of opportunities like that, where they don't exist. You guys know I'm a teacher. I've worked in several different districts, and it's, it's a, it's a problem even in districts that are, that have higher representation of students than we do. So, I think that we, I think that those two moves, with being able to work so closely with the university, and having volunteers come in, is a really unique way that we get more people in the buildings, and then, just that we put that language in, I think is super important.
Martha?
Yeah, I, I think that there are, like, University of Hartford has a lot of teaching programs, and they have, I knew it once, the minority representation is really high. I think if we are predominantly just working with UConn, I think that's being very narrow. And so, there are some other schools we might look at. And, you know, we just, we just really, really need to, as I said, dig deep, and we just need to do this. You have to decide you're going to do it. And I'm not, I'm not saying it's easy, but, I mean, just in today's paper, Willa Manick has brought in some overseas from Canary Islands, or some, you know, for Spanish and so forth. So, we're getting some Spanish representation. And, I mean, I think that's very creative, to do something like that. So, there might be other avenues that we really need to, we need to, we need to get working on this. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Jill? You got that, thank you. All right, then we, I will take a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Thank you very much, folks. Do I have a motion to go into?
Yes, it is. It's on the back.
I'm sorry, do I have a motion to go into executive? Dave did, a second. So, Dave made the motion, Jill? Rebecca seconded? I, we need to turn the live stream off. Wait, we take, we're all in favor going into executive session? Opposed? Sounds like we are. Okay, Jill, we can turn that live tr, stream off now.